How much you need today, sir?
Oh, I'm just here to help watch.
It is Thursday, October 15th, 2020. We call them in order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And Lynn has minutes of reports received and filed?
Yeah, I have September 2020 Treasures Right Conciliation Report filed.
Okay. Then we're going to forego all the other, but we will go to visit contracts, approval and signing of renewal of WIC contract for DHSS.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is the renewal of the WIC contract. And remember, what month was that? They're all blurring together. We came and talked about the increase because instead of just giving us a cost per participant, they actually had all the WIC agencies redo their budget and give us, you know, what it actually costs to run the WIC program. And that's when we made that position full time. So I made sure that is actually what they gave us. So it matches what Melinda had put in her lap, which is a local agency plan. So we just need the renewal of this contract.
I'm fine with it.
Yep. I gotta get my pink shirt out.
No, I need more.
I move that we sign the contract with DHSS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then we will move right into the CARE Act funding.
All right. How are you all this morning?
Good.
Wonderful.
Great. All right. So we are going to really just jump in and kind of finish up where we were, I guess, from Tuesday, talking about some additional funding recommendations. And so without our no, Teresa.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Yeah, so I'll just jump into the funding recommendations you guys should have got. So jump down to the A section. So we did get the prioritized list from City of Jefferson, and now it is in that order. If you go through, I believe it is the item, modifications to the fire station. So anything above the modifications to the fire station, which would be A02522, those are items that have already been approved by their city administrator. And anything below that, I do not believe that anybody has approved that or purchased it or anything like that. I don't know if they purchased those things above the fire station, the fire station above, but it has been, somebody at the city has looked at it further. So they did not give us any bids or anything just yet, just the prioritized list. So I didn't know if you wanted to kind of maybe go through what they prioritize and if you want to, if there's stuff that you do not want to fund, that we can go back to and let them know that we don't need bids for that or anything in regards to that.
Teresa, do you want to just kind of walk through each of the ones that, from that top level, I guess the ones that we're putting forth for?
Well, we're really not like putting forth anything just yet because we still need to get those bids like we talked about last time. To really get an idea of what, like, you know, that you guys were talking about that $100,000 for that glass and things like that. So we still haven't heard exactly what all is included in that. But some of these things that still aren't in the eligible cost category, it's just more of a, they haven't given us a good direct link to COVID, so that we can put it in that eligible cost. So we were hoping with--
Well, we have the city administrator here today if he wants to--
--to see which ones are.
--address that $100,000 for protective glass installation for lower level.
So Teresa and Julie, we do have people from the city here today at the meeting, so--
Okay. Perfect.
Hi, Steve Kroll with the city. There's two really categories, as you noted. One is above the fire station. Those items are items that we're in a process of trying to purchase now, so those would eventually be in the reimbursement column. Then there's the other group of items, which are really future kinds of items. We don't have bids for any of those items. We may have some invoices or some quotes for some of those items, but since they haven't been purchased yet, then, you know, we don't have anything specific, although some of them have some quotes that we've gotten or some better estimates. For example, some of the modifications to buildings were some discussions that we had with contractors. So depending on, you know, the item and what we may have. So you mentioned the modifications to downstairs of City Hall. Those are, I don't have a very specific, that was a general discussion. Some of these were identified early on in the process of, you know, the whole pandemic, like March-ish. And so some of those were kind of broader estimates at that time. We certainly can get those, but the downstairs are partitions, some modifications to some of the entryway doors and some things like that. So we can get that if that's something of interest.
That one, we might need a little more clarification on, but I--
Yeah, we can get specifics on that one.
I guess we could say not to exceed, I mean, this, you know, not to exceed these amounts, but--
Sure.
--that, we just couldn't figure out why it would take $100,000--
I understand, yep.
--to, you know, add protective glass installations, so.
And Steve, right now, they're in priority order?
Yes.
Okay.
The, yeah, it kind of depends on, you know, your definition of priority order and urgency. Some of them are, like the radios, are a broader perspective than something like a personal protective equipment. So sometimes it's hard to say which one may be more urgent or more directly COVID-related using your definition, but--
Right.
--as far as a priority order, we try to put those in that, that kind of an order. In both the top category and the bottom category, lower category. And I just mentioned, as I recall, I think, I know that early on, I don't remember the date-ish, but May, June-ish, I think we submitted a list of the future items, and behind each of those, we had some documentation, some explanation and documentation, although we may not have had invoices at that time because it was, and still is, some of them were a general concept, but, so, you know, there is a little bit of information on some, each of those items. But we certainly can get some more detail for you.
So I have a question for BKD. So in the city's original application, it included reimbursement of salaries. Is that correct?
No, that very first one, that did get approved?
No, just in their original application.
They have many, many applications, or 30 of them or so that we have. I think there was one in there that specified 911 and all the--
That might have been before I came on. I don't think that's in our list.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I think--
Maybe they could point that out if it is.
Yeah, yeah. Early on, we did have the salaries as we understood the act said salaries related to COVID-related were eligible. So we had that number in early on, but I don't think we submitted it once you had your portal up and running.
Yeah, I don't remember approving any of those salary claims.
Yeah, we haven't approved any. I was just asking if they had submitted that. And if so, I'd like to know if those salaries are eligible. And if so, I'd be more willing to fund up to their maximum one time through that, and then they could, they could hash out what they need to spend for COVID-related stuff down at City Hall.
So if they have public health and safety payroll, those would qualify, and we could do it that way very easily. That's, that's what's given as a practical expedient for the guidance, I think it was last month. Julie can correct me if I'm wrong. So that, that's a, that's a pretty, I want to say, easy way to do it, but it is definitely an easier way if we do it all in one chunk of payroll.
It'd be similar--
And through the end of the year.
It'd be similar to what we did for the public schools. Just one application, one chunk, here's your money, and then goes back into your GR, and then you guys can spend it however you want.
Yeah, as long as they've got the public health and safety personnel, I think they have 800 and I want to say it's 50-ish left. So over March 1 through December 30, if they have public health and safety employees of that amount, wages of that amount, yeah, that would be--
So it doesn't matter if that was already included in their budget?
Yeah, no, it does not matter. It can be included in their budget. That was a, that was an exception to that rule that they gave us, or they gave everyone that, that practical expedience to just use it on those public health and safety individuals, regardless if they were in the budget.
So--
The only thing the city would need to do is, they do need to provide a letter, just to find that category of employees, you know, that they would expect that they will put over later. So, for example, it may be, you know, police, it could be public health administrators, but typically they just want to talk about the class of employees, and it can just be like a one-page letter.
So you want to give them the max allocation based on population that we came up with?
So I'm just one. But to me, if we want to go through and make sausage over every one of these things, we can, and I'm more than happy to make sausage all day long, but--
I got to be done by 11:30. We're having soup and chili in--
I mean, well, I thought we'd go shoot a couple deer and make sausage for a couple months, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to be quarantined down in the woods. You know my story.
I'm just saying that I think it'd be a lot easier and let them, let them figure out what they want to spend it on and what their priorities are.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That's--
There you go. There's your two votes. I did have one, I did talk to the city council person and kind of ask what their priorities were. And one of them was the self-service kiosk, which is on the list, but I don't, Steve, if this is something you and the mayor worked through or whatever, but I didn't know if they had a say in it, so I just wanted to bring that up and throw that out there. Really, it's, if it frees up other money, you all can put the kiosk in, and the sheet I have has like 13 million in payroll, so it, that's where it could go towards.
Well, similar to the $6 million that the public schools are spending on online curriculum and they, you know, so I just think it's much cleaner, it's much easier, and, and we're not spending a lot of time fighting over what, what should be an allowable expense for doing the downstairs or whatever it is, so.
Steve, you guys didn't receive any other grant funding for payroll itself or COVID, did you?
No, we did not. And actually, I was just sitting there getting ready to say it, and I, the city did not receive any direct allocation for CARES Act funding, other than for some money that we got separate from this kind of CARES Act funding for our transit service and airport. Those are some direct allocations related to operations.
Are you guys all on board with this, again?
I think it'd be, I mean, you're still gonna, it's still gonna have to go through BKD as you do it, but, so--
What will? It'll be one application--
Right, but just as long as we have the information that they're needing, so the letters stating why the people are, the documentation showing that they actually use that payroll money.
Do you like that idea? Does that sound like that'd be something that would work good for the city?
Separate from wherever the, right, you know, the gold dollar amount is, that's a separate discussion. But from, from that point of view, if that information is helpful, we submitted some of that early on, but we can certainly do a letter. We've got, actually, the salary stuff's very easy because we went and ran that off of our actual payroll that we had at that particular time. So we can certainly provide that information, yes.
If that works for you all, I'm fine with it, but if you want to--
It does make it easier than--
We don't have to decide it today.
Go on, project by project, sure.
Talk about if you, and that can be the direction we want to head. I just know that there were some things that other council people had mentioned, and then if this goes towards salaries, that'd just be something they can take up the fight with, with you, I guess. So, I mean, it's, and some of it was doing the building inspections and stuff like that, trying to keep businesses going, and, you know, that's pretty important, too. So that's why I said I'd come up here and kind of lead the fight on that, that aspect of it, so.
That's correct, yes.
Doing the inspections and getting all their permits and stuff like that, trying to keep, keep government open and moving, trying to make you all work.
Make it easier. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, we, I just soon act today. We put this off and put this off and--
We got till December 31st.
And it also helps us pursue some other funding sources and for some of these other items, if there are those kinds of sources out there.
Teresa, do you have the allocation in front of you for the City of Jefferson based on population that we have currently?
Like, pulling it up right now. So I've got that they have left over 849,290. So I don't know if the city would be willing to go ahead and submit an online application that just lists out their public health and safety payroll up to that amount. I don't know, I don't know how many months that would take to get to that amount, but if they already have it, if, if from March through, you know, September or whatever, they've already gone over that amount, we can just get that, get that settled.
They went over it in one pay period.
We did, yeah, we're, that's--
Yeah.
So, yeah, like I said, the list I had, it showed that you had 11 pay periods left for this year or something. 11, 11 periods remaining.
Yeah.
And the total between fire department, public safety, police, school resource officers, et cetera, was at 13 million. So I don't think you have a problem getting to that number.
Correct. All that's correct. Of course, we did that estimate, you know, several months ago, but it's, the information's still the same, yes.
I don't think it'd be a problem.
So we can--
If that works for you all--
Stay, do you like this idea?
I like the idea, yes.
Okay. Carrie?
Well, then I don't want to do it if Steve likes it.
Carrie, do--
We're just teasing.
Hey, I'm glad to go through every item, too. I ain't worse.
I can only eat so much sausage.
I think it's, it is a simpler way to do it. I agree, this can be pretty complex, and I think that having an opportunity to have the communication back and forth like we are is very helpful to work out maybe a solution. And then as you work through, and I know you've got some money set aside for future allocating, just kind of depending on what happens, I would say that, you know, we may find continued need, because I feel like the city and county, that us together, we're kind of overarching with everything else, the other, you know, small business, nonprofits, other, other things that are in here, we're kind of over all that, so we have to function so that all of these other ones can function. So we would just probably still say that we would want to remain engaged in the process as you go through the final couple months, as you are getting to these final numbers, that we would be happy to continue to engage and communicate with how can we serve our citizens in the city and county together.
Yes, future funds may become available.
Yes.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah, we just, we don't know what lays ahead.
Sure. And we want to continue to work with you in the engagement, that process and communication, so thank you for allowing us to communicate together.
By doing this, it gets you the money, it, it allows you to have conversations with your city council and whatever, prioritize what is really necessary immediately and, you know, and figure out what needs to be funded.
Thank you for that option.
So Teresa and Julie, can you work with the city? They will submit an application for the 849,290 in payroll costs, and they will work with you on what items are needed, such as that letter, to get that application moved through quickly?
Well, we may use-- And if they want to, go ahead and attach some of their payroll documents to that application, like whatever they've got for March, April, May, June, how much it takes to get to that point, then we can get rolling on that pretty quickly.
So yes, it would be a new online application for just the payroll costs with the documentation showing that total cost, and then a letter stating why the salaries you're submitting would qualify under COVID.
And I can give, I can send them a little bit of language on that guidance, too, so they can kind of phrase it in that way as well.
Yeah, we've had others do that as well, so, yeah, we're happy to help you walk through that language, and maybe they can track your activity to Margie.
Yes, Margie would be the best, but we will, we understand, and my only thought would be that we may turn in what, what we consider the full amount and let you all determine what amount to approve, if that's okay, if you understand.
So you want to do the application for whatever payroll you have?
Yeah, yes.
And it will knock it down? We can do it that way, too.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Teresa, what else do you got?
Um, so we'll move through the D section. That's just the contract tracing that we've talked about before. We'll talk a little bit about the E section. I did have a good conversation with the E00182. I think I can say names now since they came and talked to you, but that's the cap region at Tom. So we got that spreadsheet sorted out. So that number has changed slightly, and that is for expenses that have already been incurred. So we are going to update his application for that, those amounts that have already been incurred. This doesn't include anything for September going forward. Now, Tom did talk about how tests have been up. I think he said in September alone, they've had 4,000-plus tests already, and so he does expect that there will be more costs into December. If he wanted to come back and apply for more funds, if that was available, he would be doing that as well. But right now, he'd like to just kind of get some money in his hands. The reason this is still in just potentially eligible is because I wanted to break it out into the different categories, and that, we had that call late on yesterday afternoon, so I didn't get a chance to break that all out into categories. But I am pretty confident that that's all going to be eligible costs that we will put forward. He did, he was able to give us the breakout of who, Cole County, those tests were for, and that was at 56% was Cole County. So keep that in mind as well. And I think that's about it for that application. Did you have any other questions? We talked for about half an hour or so, so there was a lot of things we talked about.
So we still have the three healthcare providers that have applications open there, the mobile testing trailer, which we kind of talked about. Did you guys have a chance to talk to Community Health Center?
I did. Five to six months is what they said, so I don't know if that one's going to be off the table then for that, because she did say it was a custom trailer, but yeah, it would take five to six months before they got it.
So that one may not be feasible at this time--
No.
--due to the timeline that we're within?
I'm not going to vote for it, this five to six months.
No, I think--
Do something, I feel, help building and stand it up to your testing. So, what, do we know how many tests each of them are doing and what it costs per test that we could reimburse, kind of along those lines?
So I don't know that we have a per-test cost.
I just thought of it, so--
I do, actually.
You do?
Talking to Tom yesterday, he said that they pay about $100 per test to get run, so that's just the running of the test, that's not the supplies involved in the test. And then they are getting reimbursed $90 on each of those tests from either insurance or private pay or other, there's another fund that they can get some money from of people that don't have insurance. So $10 out of that is what's not getting reimbursed. So that's when we do the good breakout of everything that they're asking for. There's a purchase service line, which is going to be those lab fees, which is the actual cost of each test being run that has not been reimbursed.
And then there'd be supplies on top of that, Teresa?
Right, there's supplies. There's also salary included in this, the 1,001,13 number for the mobile test site, to staff that mobile test site. So I did want to break that out, because I know we've had some salary questions before, so I want to make sure to break that out when we do have that breakout. And then, yeah, just some medical supplies, PPE, other test-related supplies, and then the things to get the mobile tent set up as well, or the mobile, I don't know if they had a tent, but just that mobile location.
So the other healthcare provider, SSM, they did not include any payroll costs, is that correct?
That is correct. These are all testing supplies for the 1977. And we did get back with them on those $20,000 items that was in other, and we didn't get those cleared up, and those are eligible costs.
On the St. Mary's, that's, these are expenses that are incurred above and beyond what they've been reimbursed for, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. These are items that they have not seen funded by any other item, any other means.
And these are all expenses that have already been incurred, nothing--
Correct.
--going forward?
Yeah, all of this right now, except for that mobile testing unit in the E section, are already incurred costs. That includes the cap regional one, too. They went ahead and pulled back those budgeted ones, just hopefully for some expediency. So when we present to you on Tuesday, I'll have a better breakdown of that, so you can see that a little bit clearer.
You guys want to move forward with--
So if we have--
Yeah, so the only one I would be bringing forward would be the St. Mary's--
Yeah.
--from the 1977.
Because we're going to break out the other one and maybe present next week?
Well, I have to recuse myself anyway on it, so.
There's no recuse for you. So are these going to be, are we going to have anything left then to do more testing if the crap hits a fan and we really need to amp it up? And even, we talked about, was it Boone? Boone was maybe going to do a bid to do testing and basically subcontract people out. Are we going to be done with that money then?
I mean, that's kind of up to you. I mean, you can limit the dollar amount at the moment, so like she alluded to, the 1.1 from capo region, only 56% of that's for testing Cole County residents, so you could say that you're only going to fund 56% of their costs at the moment. So you have the ability to decide what, what that number looks like at the moment. So if you wanted to do, we have 1.5, if you wanted to do a million total now and save 500,000 for later, but I think you need to look at it, too. If you're giving them funding now, that's going to help them later, because they're not going to be further behind.
Right. But if we take off the mobile testing unit--
Yeah.
--is there somewhere that they could use, do testing, use the money to do testing, to where we had three of them doing testing and trying to reimburse three of them? Does that make sense?
It does. I don't know that Community Health Center has the capabilities as far as staffing's involved--
It would strictly be the--
The trailer.
Uh, mobile.
Yeah. So I don't know if that's a possibility. I mean, I guess we could have someone reach out to Community Health Center and see if they want to submit a different application, since this one's going to take the five to six months to get here.
Will you take the trailer off? It still leaves this money that, you know, we just don't know what, it leaves this money we can have for November and December if we would have a tremendous spike or something like that.
So I think the only one for consideration today is the 319,892 from St. Mary's, which is broken out into those different categories.
Yeah, I'm, if, these are expenses that they've incurred that they have not been reimbursed for, then I'm fine with granting that.
So we had a million and a half for the healthcare?
Yeah, and--
We spent 24 of that.
Yeah, 24,000 so far. Yeah, 24,000 so far.
So are they doing about the same amount of testing?
No, they're not doing as much. Cap Region, I think, is doing a greater amount, but.
So they're going to probably need more of the money because they're doing more testing? Or do you know?
Well, I know they're asking for a lot more money, but.
Well, sure.
Yeah, but we'll have to see the breakdown next week when.
Yeah, and these expenses are from June, or I'm sorry, March through August. So they have not submitted any of their September expenses. And we talked a little bit about the September expenses and how things are increasing right now, so their costs. Because they gave us kind of some budget numbers and it was going to be more than those budgets.
Do you know how many tests they've both done? Are they similar, around the same numbers, or is one doing more than the other?
I do not know how many St. Mary's is doing. I can absolutely ask that, but I don't know that.
Okay. I was just curious because I, I mean, if they're doing the same amount, then hell, I'd give them both the same amount and try to be equal on it or fair.
I think it's more like two to one, but.
But if, you know, Cap Region's doing a lot more and they're asking for a lot more, then that's reasonable. So. I don't want to act.
Because I know a lot of the expense for St. Mary's is that actual testing system that they purchased. So it's not as much the tests themselves. And I don't think, since they can do, run those tests themselves, I'm not sure the cost. Because with Cap Region, they have to send those tests away to a lab. And it looks like St. Mary's with this testing system can do the testing themselves, I believe.
Okay, but if Cap Region's doing 200 a day, St. Mary's is doing 100 a day, then I would, it would seem like it would make sense to almost have a two to one funding or reimbursement.
Sure.
They're both going to be able to come up with more than the one and a half million by the end of the year.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
I don't think that would be a problem. Yeah, especially Cap Region. I'm not sure about St. Mary's, but.
So I'm not saying that I want to equally fund all of them, or both of them, but I want to be fair with it. So if one's doing more testing, I think it's only fair that they be reimbursed more. So I'd, so I'd like to know before I choose on the funding on either one of them at this point.
So you just wanted to know total number of tests they've completed so far? Because that's going to vary by day, I'm sure.
I think that'd give us an idea.
Okay, so how many?
So if you're wanting one and a half million for testing 200 a day and somebody else is wanting one and a half million and they're only doing 100 a day. I don't, that's not.
So Cap, Cap Region right now is doing 150 a day is what they said right now with the kind of increase. So right around 4,000 a month. Don't know if that's going to carry over. Hope, they're hoping it, it comes back down. But I can get with St. Mary's and see where they're testing. I'm sure they know how many tests they've run so far.
All right, I'd like to have an idea. Doesn't have to be down to the bone, but give you an idea.
Sure. Would you like to know, I don't know if they can do the percentage thing like Cap Region did as well? Would you like that information? I can ask that as well if they know that.
If they have it. Because that, this money is for Cole County citizens. I don't want to be funding everybody else getting testing, take care of our own person. I don't care if I am being selfish, Cole County is first, so.
So you don't want to, you don't want to act on St. Mary's today?
No.
Okay, Teresa. So if you can get those questions and we'll bring those two back forward once we get those two questions answered.
Yeah, I'll try to give them a call or try and get that information before Tuesday.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and move down to the not-for-profits, the F section. I think you guys have all the applications now. I believe that we're, we were planning on bringing forward. We also have their names in the description. If they have a total line, it's in the total line. If they don't have individual broken out items, then we just put it in that, that description area. So Cole County Public Water District is asking for some window barriers in the amount of $4,100. Again, I think that is a, that was a quote, I believe. But again, that one was from a while ago, so I'm not sure if they've actually implemented that. I was just going to go through each one unless you want to, we've kind of gone through these in the past, but I can keep going through each one if that's okay. So the Special Learning Center was asking for just some additional cleaning services, some PPP, PVE, and then some video surveillance system for contract tracing. We have already funded the Special Learning Center of a small amount of money from Phase Two when they did provide receipts and things like that. But this was, those items that they did not have, they had not maybe purchased yet. I know that, that video surveillance system, they had not purchased yet. So they were waiting on funding to be able to purchase that. The next two, 183 and 191, we aren't bringing forward yet. The F210, that is for Lincoln University. And I did send them an email. I did not hear a response back how they wanted that broken out. But yeah, for COVID contact tracing and other public health items. And then distance learning, if they do want to break that out. The 236 was just for Big Brother and Big Sister for some telehealth and social service hardware. The 1864, that was for the YNC of Jefferson City. Again, this is the one that has some payroll items in there. That top item is going to be your just cleaning supplies and safety equipment. That's pretty easy to figure out if that's eligible. And then the, the rest of that is going to be your staffing. So they did increase their staffing for social distancing. So we did feel that that was eligible. The pay in the summer camp staff, since they were at the 25 max already, we didn't really consider that. And I don't think that that would be eligible. And then paying staff in quarantine. So they did have some, some people that were exposed that they did send to quarantine and had to. They went ahead and paid those staff while they were in quarantine, which is an eligible expense. As we keep moving down, the 1891 is going to be distance learning trade, training for the Missouri Electric Co-op. Again, they are maxed out of the 25,000. This was for some equipment, I believe, and some other just trainings that they could train their, those people that are in that co-op. The Historic City of Jefferson, again, just wanted some help with some telework technologies. The 1966 was the Jefferson City Rape and Abuse Crisis Service. And this was the one that they redid their shelter to where they could have additional bathrooms and additional social. So social distancing within their facility. I believe that the total cost of that project was in the 200,000 range, but they were just asking for the 25,000 and that is their maximum amount. And then the last one is for the Girl Scouts of Missouri Heartland. We were getting a little bit more information on that payroll to see how, if they changed for COVID or things like that. But they did also ask for some telework technology. So the only, the only thing we would bring forward for approval would be that telework technology at this point. We're still gathering information on that payroll. So that's all we have for the nonprofit section.
You guys ready to move forward on some of those, or?
I mean, I see the utilities as more of a business than I do of a nonprofit. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with Lincoln University. I think it should be under schools somewhere. Not as a nonprofit. I know we didn't have that education, post, post-high school education in there, but. I think there's some money in education that we could reallocate, help out Lincoln. And then you had said something about the Special Learning Center had, had a previous application that we approved?
Correct. So they, they had an application that included both items that they had purchased invoices. So during Phase Two, we were able to approve those during Phase Two. But these are the items that they had not provided that invoice or proof of purchase. And I, at least with the video surveillance contract tracing system, I, last time I talked to them, and that was a little bit ago, probably, at least a couple of weeks ago. But they had not purchased that yet.
But they're still below the 25,000 threshold, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, they're well under that still.
Yeah, so.
And they, they did have a positive case there. So.
So Kristi, even if you consider the Public Water District a small business, they're still under the 5,000 if that's.
Right. Well, one of them is.
Uh, yes, the other one is not electric cooperative?
See, co-ops are a little different though than the AMRA. It's, it's.
MFA's a co-op. Co-ops are huge, so.
And if you move Lincoln to schools, do you want to fund more than the 25,000 or you want to limit them to the 25,000 still?
I don't know. I think that's a conversation that we have.
The last conversation was schools was K through 12.
Right.
That's what we did originally, yes.
So if we want to change the rules in Phase Three, then we can do that. Because that was, that's what I thought initially was, that should be under schools, but.
So then you've also got Columbia College, you've got William Woods, you've got.
They go to Columbia.
Columbia College has a place here in town, but.
Yeah, I mean, but they're.
State Fair, I think, well, used to. I'm not sure if they're still here or not.
Okay, so do you want to do the ones besides those first? So take the utilities and the Lincoln University out? Do you want to do Special Learning Center?
I would do, I would even do Lincoln right now for 25,000 and, you know, we can just.
And we can keep that open.
Yeah, we can, we can still talk to them, but. Yeah, if we want to, if we want to take the Public Water District and Missouri Electric, Electric Co-ops out, I'd like to approve the others. I mean.
Yeah, we can move those to the small business category. It's very shut that's time.
So you're okay?
I would say on the 1999, the Girl Scouts of Missouri, if you want to hold off on approving that telework, I'd like to get back with them a little bit on that payroll. To see if any of those people would be eligible before approving that one.
So we can hold on that one?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to fund Girl Scouts. I will not vote for that.
You don't like their cookies?
No, I don't like their beliefs.
Kicked you out, did they?
So, so let's start at the bottom. Let's put.
Were you all right with the electric cooperative and?
At 5,000?
But not necessarily under this.
Well, I mean, if we, if we pull them out under businesses, then they have a maximum of 5,000 if they're considered a small business.
It's semantics at this point.
Yeah.
Well, right, but it's a difference between $20,000 for one of them.
Right. But otherwise, you're fine with them.
Yes.
Being funded, but it's going to determine what amount.
Right.
Depending on what category.
Right.
Julie, do we need to be specific about how we're categorizing people then? Like what qualifies you to be in the nonprofit versus the small business?
Um, I, I mean, I think if you want to, you know, make a determination that co-ops are considered small business. Yeah, I mean, we definitely have to be consistent in that process. So I was trying to go back to, I want to just be sure that when we said nonprofits and small businesses, I'm going to just check the language. Because I know at one point, we did talk about educational institutions that were, we didn't say higher education necessarily. But I mean, if we need to move those to schools, I think that's fine. But, but it is, then we have to, still have to find the money one way or the other. So I think it makes more sense to certainly move those items that you want to to small business. And then, I mean, for this, for the educational institutions, maybe we just make a determination, we want to cap them at 25,000 or. That would, it would be consistent if somebody upon a still a time.
Well, good.
Considered nonprofit, but.
Could we do higher ed at a hundred dollars per student like we did some of the others? I don't know. I don't know how many students are at Lincoln.
I don't know how many students are.
But I bet it's not more than.
Yeah, that's probably a lot.
Not any more than JC.
So, no, that's.
Not any more than JC.
It's less than 4,000.
Well, JC's allocation was 807, 802 or.
Or may, or maybe there's a different number. I don't know, but. I don't know how many students go to school there.
So I think you will get Columbia College, you'll get William Woods. There, a lot of them have campuses here in Cole County.
So do you want to wait with that one and discuss more how you want to do funding for higher education? We could try to reach out and see what their student population is so that we can give you a better idea of what that number looks like. But I'm not sure I have a complete list of who those higher education institutions inside the county are.
Yeah, maybe it's.
As you say, that gets a little dicey in terms of how you determine it versus, you know, I think we used. Their population was based on kind of the objective data that we had.
Home classroom size. Building size, whatever. If they have one classroom in here, certainly won't need as much money.
Sure.
But I mean, I'm willing to help them out on that too, because they still have the same obstacles here to overcome. And just setting up some of their cameras and stuff like we're doing, you know, if we can help out with that.
Well, they did, they did ask for 37.5 in their initial application. So the only reason we limited that was because of the 25,000 max. So if you wanted to fund that fully as well.
I would like to just put that on hold and let's look at doing higher education.
Think we could have something by next week for that then, or, or try to have a discussion at least next week?
Yeah. Yeah, we could pull something together for Tuesday to have a recommendation on, on methodology for higher education.
Carrie could probably email Carlos right now. He'd give you that number.
Probably Google it. Hey, Siri. Hey, Siri. She's talking to me now. I'm going to find out.
Okay, should we work through these one at a time? So Cole County Public Water District, you want to move to small business in a max of 5,000? So are you good with their application for 4,100?
Man, I'm good with approving it if we can move it to that category and, and work out of that pool.
That's fine.
Yes, we'll do that. Yes.
That's good with that?
I'm good with that too.
So we'll, we'll change. Yep.
Your meetings are a little bit longer than ours.
I don't think so.
We don't even have selfies.
Thank you all.
See you later.
So if we approve it today, we can move it to the category?
Exactly, yes.
So I move we approve F dash zero four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Next, we have Special Learning Center for a total of 3,041.
Yeah, I'm good here. I move that we approve F dash zero six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
So the F00. So the F oh oh one nine one is not ready yet, so the next one would be, and we're going to skip Lincoln University until we have that discussion, so F two thirty-six, which is Big Brothers Big Sisters for one thousand five fifty-eight.
I'm good there.
Yeah.
I move that we approve F dash zero zero two three six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is the YMCA of Jefferson City for a total of twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'm good.
Yeah.
I move that we approve F dash zero one eight six four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I lose my voice, I need a little.
The next one's Missouri Electric Cooperative, which we would move to small business and limit at five thousand dollars.
I'm good with that.
I'm good.
You guys good?
Yep.
I move that we approve F dash zero one eight nine one for five thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is the Historic City of Jefferson for four thousand eight nineteen.
Good.
Yeah.
I move we approve F dash zero one nine six four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is Jeff City Rape and Abuse Crisis Service for twenty-five thousand.
Good.
Yeah.
I move that we approve F dash zero one nine six six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we were going to hold on Girl Scouts to get more information.
What's, um, do we have any remaining balances on some of this stuff for categories, or?
Like education?
Oh, yeah.
Um, so education's a hard one, because we need to figure out that contact tracing. Hopefully this afternoon, we're going to sit down and figure that number, or at least an estimate out for what the school's contact tracing is, because I think we're going to move some numbers around from those private schools into that contact tracing category. But Teresa, can you give us what we have left in small business, healthcare providers, and nonprofits?
Maybe a spreadsheet to go with our packet for next week?
Yeah, we can include that Tuesday.
Yeah, I can include everything that we've approved today, including, well, I don't know if you want to include the Jefferson City stuff as approved yet, or, probably not. We'll wait until next week to, to look at them.
So you're talking about the contract, contact tracing, and moving what's left from education to that?
Not what's left in education. We have some private schools that have refused to take direct funding, that have said they will use it for contact tracing, so we want to move their money into contact tracing instead of the individual school.
Okay. I just, I see contact tracing more as internal is what I was asking for.
Well, I think that's where we're going to leave it. It's just kind of.
So we're going to move.
Moving that allocation around to, to not show it in schools necessarily.
Move it into internal.
Or, I mean, we have money left in internal that's unallocated at the moment. We don't have to move it yet if you want to leave it in schools and talk about higher education or even preschools, if you want to expand what you're doing.
That's the direction I was going, was leaning more towards.
So, yes, we don't have to take the allocation from the schools, but.
And, you know, I'm a little biased, because, you know, being a graduate of Lincoln, that's, I want to try to help them out as much as possible, too, so. But, you know, the ones like you mentioned, the community colleges and stuff that do have.
They have campuses here.
Yeah, campuses here, building or whatever.
I think one you need to think about, too, is if you want to do preschools. I know that they have reached out in the past. They were excluded from the K through twelve section of schooling as well, so if that's something you're thinking about or wanting to do, that's something else you need to think about.
Would that be under a business, small business?
How you want to look at it, how do you want to?
Or nonprofit, somewhere more so.
Right.
So you got small businesses and nonprofit, then, that can qualify under RISE?
I think most of them are going to be more small business. I'd almost rather wait on them until December and see, see how things pan out and.
I'm just not grouping it in with education.
Yeah, I'm not, no.
Preschools.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
My kids went there, it was a babysitting service, and they were learning stuff off there, but.
Right.
I needed somewhere to send them while I was going to work, so.
Okay, Teresa, I think that's the end of recommendations for today, correct?
Okay. Yes, that's all I got.
You guys have anything else, any other questions?
No, I like her, her banner, though, behind.
Absolutely.
You got a football back there, too. Looks like an autographed one.
See, if you visit Dallas, we.
Yeah. I got that at training camp last year, and it's got Tyreek and Sammy Watkins and Harrison Butker on it, signing it all.
Awesome.
Pretty proud of that one.
Okay, you guys have anything?
You had to bring that up, didn't you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I noticed it.
I did.
I wasn't even going to pick on it.
Julie, are you still there?
I almost think that we should have a different, I mean, you thinking preschools as small business for five thousand max, or, or we want to just have a different discussion on that, or?
Let's wait and see how much we got left in small business. I think we've got probably, what did we do, two hundred thousand for small business?
So we do have one subrecipient agreement to sign up for Lighthouse Preparatory Academy for two thousand one seventy-seven that was approved prior to, that's just signing the subrecipient agreement?
I move that we sign the subrecipient agreement for Lighthouse Preparatory Academy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
God, I'm going to have to get some of my medicine.
What kind of medicine is that?
It's a elixir.
Aid approved?
It's elixir.
Um, it's not. So one other thing, when we were talking about contact tracers for the school, so we brought on additional employees, I think we're up to ten?
Ten.
Ten. Brian has run into some additional costs as far as getting them phones and running phone lines and a switch, because we didn't have enough phone lines out there. So there's going to be some additional hardware, that's not it, hardware costs involved in that. So just, so you're aware, are you good with paying those costs, getting those employees?
How much, just approximately?
Yes.
Uh, so phones are two hundred dollars a piece, and we need three phones.
You can take mine.
And the switch.
Jess probably got one, too.
Yeah, you can have mine, too. And take that flashing light and exclamation mark in red.
You can take this one up here, too.
I'd say ballpark about six thousand bucks.
Yeah.
I'm good.
It's kind of expecting that to come along a lot somewhere.
And then will we, um, put that as an internal request for Carrie's funding, then?
Uh, yeah, I'll probably include that cost in that contact tracers estimate that we're going to do.
Okay.
So we're going to sit down and try to figure out what the maximum amount for employees is going to be. Like Christie said, you know, some days, probably not as long as we expect, other days, probably more than we expect, so that one's going to kind of be a guesstimate at the moment, but we'll include that cost in that total package.
They could show that in that spreadsheet, or you're going to maybe deduct some of that out of education for contact tracing.
Do you guys want to deduct that, or do you want to leave it in education and just use it internal at the moment?
Well, I'd like to at least see it. I mean, I don't know what that number is going to be. Is it going to be seventy thousand? Is it going to be a hundred? Is it going to be more?
Yeah, I don't know. I have ten people, and I think more of them are up to forty hours, so.
Yeah, they're, we have some full-timers.
Yeah, so, I don't know, at the moment. I got to sit down and put pen to paper.
So originally.
What have you been doing?
Just sitting here twiddling my thumbs, Sam.
No, we did, we did some.
Well, they, so they can work for, up to forty hours, as long as it's not over an extended period of time. You can average it out.
So we're considering them kind of seasonal or temporary employees?
Yes.
And they can work up to forty hours?
I'm with that. I just thought we were talking the max of twenty hours, so now forty hours, twenty-five dollars an hour, ten people.
Wow.
To what, twenty thousand a week possibly, if everybody's full-time?
Well, it's a thousand, thousand a week times ten, so ten thousand a week.
That one's not on.
Plus some payroll expenses, but. So, depends on how many weeks they work. They got, you got twelve weeks left, twelve weeks left in the year, so.
Private schools, uh, funding that they were eligible for, that, that can help a lot.
Can we go back to unfinished business?
No. Please?
Please.
Okay.
So, um, we talked about juvenile getting additional iPads. Brian just needs a purchase order signed so that they can run it through OSCE and stuff.
Okay.
You already approved the purchase.
I move they sign the purchase order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Kind of like signing a credit app the other day.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, Brian.
You stayed up here the whole time for that?
I didn't want to.
Next time, come over and whisper in one of our ears what you need done.
Yeah, we'll get you out of there. You probably got to fix Sam's computer or something, you got important stuff to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's usually the first phone call here in the morning when I get her, say, hey, Brian, can you come up here, my computer's?
It.
Hit reset, Sam, control alt.
I know, but these webinars, that's the thing, Seth.
Can we approve, uh, council table?
Oh, really?
There's only two that got missed on Friday for the P card that need to be.
It's not really us.
It's not us.
I mean, I don't know how to get these people to get their stuff.
I thought that we, I thought that we made a decision that if you didn't have it in, that you had to wait.
Well, so the P card's different, because then I'm not paying my full P card, and I'm getting penalized for it, and it's everybody getting penalized for a late payment. So that one's, that one is an exception.
Well, when are we going to do something about it so that we don't keep doing the same thing over and over and creating insanity? Cancel their P card.
Yeah, man.
So, next time it happens, cancel the P card.
Okay. Is that, that's the decision?
So when do we get the bill?
Uh, like the, right. Fourteen.
Today's the.
They were due the eighth. They were due to us the eighth.
Okay, well, we need to pay it, but send a scathing letter from us, tell them to get it up here on time.
Debbie, you're in charge of that.
Just add it to your other ones.
Here. Okay, do we have anything else before we go into closed session?
Motion to approve council table?
Oh, yeah. Maybe we approve a council table pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else before we go in close?
Get closed session done, get our in and out here, get that worked through.
Um, what are we, closed session for what?
Personnel.
Now thirteen.
What, thirteen?
Three, I mean, three, I'm sorry.
Three. I move we go into closed session for section, what?
Sixteen.
I can't remember. Six-ten point oh two one, sub-three for personnel?
Second.
Your own call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aye. Yes.
I got.